City of Lawrence Common Council, the meeting is now called to order. It is Monday, October 3rd, 2022, 6:31 PM. Can everyone please stand for Pledge of Allegiance and prayer?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Heavenly Father, we come to you today asking for your guidance, wisdom, and support as we begin this meeting. Help us to engage in meaningful discussion, allow us to grow closer as a group, and nurture the bonds of community. Fill us with your grace, Lord God, as we make decisions that might affect the communities that we serve. And to continue, remind us that all we do here today, all that we will accomplish is for the pursuit of truth, for the greater glory, and for the service of humanity. Please, as always, look out for our public service safety and guide us as we continue this meeting. We ask these things in your name. Amen.
Amen.
Okay. We have a quorum. All councilors are present. Next on the agenda is comments of councilmembers, special recognitions or resolutions. Do we have any?
Madam President, I have a few.
Okay.
I attended the Watson Farms Crime Watch Meeting, September 26th, and the residents were concerned about the parking on the streets in the neighborhood regarding Fall Creek Valley Middle School and Forest Glen Middle School. I informed them that the Code Committee was reviewing Proposal 29 related to the vehicle stopping, standing, and parking within 2,000 feet of the school. Then they went on to say, "The animal bites have increased in their neighborhood," and "the HOA of Watson Farms has hired Geist Patrol for additional three hours to assist them in the neighborhood." And the other, a resident from Boston Commons was concerned on Sunday, September 25th, there were two large trash bags behind one of the homes in Boston Commons full of white food boxes. The trash came from the field overflowing with the same trash. The ice cream wrappers and beverage cups were by the Boston Commons sign on Watertown. If someone from the Parks Department can address this issue, I would greatly appreciate it. Also, a concerned citizen of Boston Commons was wondering when the sidewalks in their subdivision were going to be fixed, and I was told by Department of Public Works it's on the list for 2023. And then also, I wanted to welcome some minority owners to the city of Lawrence. They have purchased the building called MGM, which is formerly Eddie's at 9105 East 56th Street. The proud owners are Ms. Davis and Ms. Savage, and they will be occupying the building and trying to keep everything the same. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other councilors? Seeing none, next on the agenda is approval of minutes of regular meetings of September 6th and September 21st, 2022.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Okay, motion, Councilor Russo-Moroff.
Second.
Second, Councilor Freeman. Any discussion?
Madam President.
Yes.
Thank you. Something was brought to my attention, and it was on page 3 of 9. It's for $12,000 to a company called Indy on Tap.
Oh, we're not on vouchers yet.
I'm sorry, I thought we were.
Oh, no, it's the meeting minutes.
I'm sorry?
Meeting minutes, approval of the meeting minutes?
I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Got ahead of myself.
Just hold that thought.
I will.
Madam Chair, I had a question. I had someone ask me if, if you recall, we didn't fund the deputy mayor position last year because Mr. Fenwick, or for this year, because Mr. Fenwick left, and so they asked me if we could use those funds that are listed for the 2023 budget for deputy mayor, because I thought that was an empty position. But in reviewing the minutes, I see between the September 6th meeting, Mr. Hoffman was listed as chief of staff, and on the mid-month meeting, he's listed as deputy mayor. And I apologize if I've missed something. I just want to make sure we don't have somebody in a position that's not funded. Does somebody know something about that?
I don't. Controller, would you know?
Looking for the minutes. We've kind of talked about this with the difference in the budget and the salary ordinance. So that sets your ranges, and then you have the actual budget. So I know last year, we removed a position, and kind of the point I'd made between the events coordinator to deputy chief of staff, if you change someone's title, their pay range is still the same. So their budget is, or the budget funds the position. I know there's that discrepancy with the ordinance. One of the things we're kind of looking into is the, is the state statute has that position created, and then we've created it with ordinance. And we had found that the council had established that department. So the budget has the position funded. If you look at the chief of staff position...
The salary ordinance doesn't have the position funded, correct? The current salary ordinance...
Well, the salary ordinance doesn't fund, it sets the ranges for pay for the position.
And there is no range of pay for a deputy mayor position, correct?
No, because it's not in there.
In the current version, there's not, right?
I don't have it in front of me.
There, I guarantee you, there is not. So I just want to address a problem, if we've got one, and so I raise it to you. We don't have to fix it tonight. But if what you're telling me is your position is, A, deputy mayor doesn't exist unless a council creates it for a second-class city. A council, I don't know when, created the position, but then they essentially defunded it through the salary ordinance last year. If what you're telling me is that you've created, you've created that position when there was no salary for it, I have some grave concerns about that. And I don't want to be at a position where I have to tell my clients, "Well, then just repeal the deputy mayor position," because I'm not here to play games. But if we're playing games by moving people around in positions that have no salary associated with that title, I have some concerns.
Okay. Let's, yeah.
We can take, we can follow up. You can follow up with us on that.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Just a quick question. Do we need to amend the minutes then, or are we voting on them as they are?
I think we may have to. I think we need to, yeah. Let's table approving the minutes until we figure out whether we need to do an amendment. Next on the agenda, signing of vouchers, approval of claims, and authorization of payment. Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Motion, Councilor Chevlat.
I'll second.
Second, Councilor Russell. Discussion, Councilor Wells.
I'm still here. I still have a question about Indy on Tap, and I would like to make a motion that we either pull that, that payment until we can get some clarification on it.
And so you're already in discussion with someone about that?
I'm sorry?
Are you already in discussion with someone about that?
Well, I thought maybe we go into committing, or go in front of the Finance Committee for clarification.
Madam Chair, there was a question that was forwarded to the Controller, and I believe we got it, what, yesterday?
Okay.
Or Friday?
I didn't see it.
And there was a response to that, and I believe Councilor Wells is referring to some of the responses. He wants to dive deeper.
Okay.
Into the Controller's response to that. So he's asking for this voucher essentially to be moved to mid-month at a minimum.
Okay.
That we can investigate it.
Understood. Thank you. Sorry, I didn't see that. So thank you. Thank you for that.
Do you know the voucher number and the amount?
It's for $12,000.
Oh, I did remember that. I do remember that.
It's for $12,000?
Mm-hmm.
Indiana Tap.
I got it.
Okay, so there's been a motion made to, to approve the vouchers with the exception of that one voucher. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second, Councilor Denny. Okay, all in favor to approve the vouchers with the exception of the one that's being pulled? Show of hands. Motion carries unanimous. Next, we have reports of committees. Finance.
Madam Chair, the Finance Committee met tonight and reviewed the budget, which we've discussed in Finance, including the salary ordinances, as well as in the committee as a whole. Also, we reviewed Proposal Number 17, or excuse me, Proposal Number 22, which is a review of economic development revenue bonds for a project on the fort. That recommendation was, or that was recommended out of Finance unanimously. And I believe the Keystone folks are here tonight for additional questions that may not have been answered in Finance.
Okay, great. We'll, we'll get to that in the agenda, and if you all have questions for them, we can cover it at that time. Committee as a whole, we discussed Proposal Number 17, 2022, and Proposal Number 23, Proposal Number 24, Proposal Number 25, and Proposal Number 26. On Proposal Number 17, it was, it was recommended out of the committee as a whole. Proposal Number 23 was recommended. Proposal Number 24 was, was recommended and changed to a 0% increase in amendment for elected officials for the year 2023. Proposal Number 25, 2022, was not recommended out. Proposal Number 26, 2022, was recommended out with a unanimous vote. These are all still, with the exception of Proposal Number 17, they are still in committee as a whole. We will meet prior to the mid-month meeting. Hopefully Cathy of 5:30 is available. We have the public hearing, I believe, scheduled that day as well. So we will... We skipped it. Okay. Yeah, okay. That's fine. We're gonna do, we're gonna do the public hearing.
The public hearing for the mid-month for which number?
No, it's next. It's next, so disregard. So let me finish. So 23, 4, 5, and 6 are still in committee as a whole, and we will hear those one final time at our mid-month meeting. Parks. Did you have an update, Councilor Wells? Has Parks met?
I'm sorry?
Has Parks met?
Oh, yes, we did. Thank you. The Park Committee met on the sale, or I'm sorry, the lease of the Sterrett Building, and it's being leased to the, the film company. And it's also going to be, the film company's going to be affiliated with the Arts for Lawrence. So that whole complex now is basically Arts for Lawrence, the theater and other property back to the, to the north, and of course, the Sterrett Building. There was some concern about the, the loss of the Sterrett Building to citizens for the use of being leased and whatnot. The Parks Department has assured us that they're going to make more revisions and more updates, modernizations, I guess if you will, to the other two facilities. They're at Jen Park, and they, they're on Franklin Road at Community Center. So, and they also told us that they, we don't have, the, the buildings are not rented to the extent where we think that we're going to have an overflow, or someone's not going to be able to get availability. At least, that wouldn't have been in the past, because there's not that much leasing of the properties. But the, I mean, myself, I was a little bit in question of the situation with it, but I think it's going to be a good thing for our city. The, the film company is definitely, they're, they're going to be just a great asset, I think, to the Arts for Lawrence, and also to the, to our school systems. So I think there's a lot of wins to it. I think there's, I think the wins that we're getting is probably well more than the loss of the use of the Sterrett Building.
Okay.
That's what we had.
Great. Thanks for that update.
Thank you.
Okay, next on the agenda is the public hearing for Proposal Number 26, 2022. Proposal Number 26, 2022, introduced by Councilor Freeman, a proposal for an ordinance for appropriations and tax rates for the 2023 budget year. Okay, so the public hearing is now open? If there's, is there anyone who signed up to speak? Okay. So if there's no one here to speak regarding the public hearing for Proposal Number 26, 2022, it is now closed. Next on the agenda is unfinished business. Proposal Number 17, 2022. Proposal Number 17, 2022, introduced by Councilor Denny, a proposal for an ordinance amending Title I, Article II, Chapter II, Section 4 of Municipal Code, the City of Lawrence, redistricting common council district boundaries pursuant to Indiana Code 36-4-6-3, and providing a time when the same shall take effect. Okay, is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second. Motion, Councilor Russo-Moroff. Second, Councilor Whitfield. Any discussion? All in favor by show of hands for Proposal Number 17, 2022? Okay, we got 1, 2, 3, 7, 2. Motion carries, 7, 2.
Let the two of them.
Oh, I'm sorry. All opposed. Councilor Russell, Councilor Wells. Thank you. Next on the agenda, Proposal Number 22, 2022. Proposal Number 22, 2022, introduced by Councilor Freeman, a proposal for an ordinance of the Common Council of the City of Lawrence, Indiana, authorizing the issuance of the City of Lawrence, Indiana Economic Development Revenue Bonds and the lending of the proceeds of, to KC for LLC, and authorizing and approving other actions in respect thereto. Okay. I think we have someone from, that's here to answer any questions for the council.
So the, the team is in the back from the Keystone group, and I believe some folks from the Reuse Authority may be here, or redevelopment may be here tonight to answer any questions we have. There was a presentation that is available on the video that was made, and the owner, of course, of, of the organization that's doing the building is here as well.
Okay. Thank you. So councilors, I want to open it up for any discussion regarding Proposal Number 22, 2022.
Madam Chair, I'll just...
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Just on a, from the Finance Committee, just an overview of a few of the pieces. This is a development that's going on the fort, and what they're requesting is a $12.5 million bond for, for that area, which is essentially a guaranteed bond through the TIF district. There's an existing TIF, and they can go more into detail with that portion of it. But this is a re, how do you call it, a restating of the TIF or redevelopment of the TIF? Yeah. And so there is an existing TIF. This is just adding to that layer. And again, the bond's for $12.5 million.
Councilor Wells?
It's my understanding, because we had a thing on this, it's been a few months ago, maybe a couple months ago, that the city is basically giving the property to this developer. Is that correct?
Councilor, um, Madam President, I thought we heard that from Mr. Fenwick, but was somebody here that could answer that? And I, I don't mean to, I appreciate you being in the audience, I don't mean to call you, but I do remember a discussion regarding the property and how that, the actual land is being utilized.
It's not the city that's giving them the land, it's the Fort Harrison Reuse Authority, and they've agreed to purchase it for $10.
For how much, please?
$10.
$10?
It's the Fort Harrison Reuse Authority that owns, currently owns the property.
Like, good investment.
Yes, it is.
Yeah. One other concern that I had, that I posed to the developer back when we had the hearing on it, was there was a substantial amount of apartments that were being built in there. I don't remember the exact amount, but it didn't look like there was anywhere close to the parking availability for inside the complex. They had parking, and then there was, I think, some parking on the street. But if you take the amount of tenants that are going to live there, say, maybe the people have two cars, two people and two cars, and then if you take the shops that are going to operate out of there, and then the customers and the employees, it just didn't look to me that there was any way that there was adequate parking for this, for this facility.
I'm not qualified to answer that, other than Keystone has built numerous facilities of this size, in fact, probably larger. And if they're confident there's enough parking, I would take their word, but I would, would you like to have someone from Keystone answer that?
Kelly Mulder, VP of Development for Keystone, and I recognize most of you, and I gave a presentation last time, so, good question. We have 248 units, which would be the max, that is presented in the proposal right now. And we have like 333 parking spaces.
333?
Yep. Typically, we need one per unit. There'd be a mix of, like, 60% will be studios or one bedrooms, and the other 40% would be the two bedrooms. Right now, as far as code goes, we can even go less than, than one, because it is going to be in a transient, rented development area. So again, there'll be public transportation that we see being used here. So that helps some of that as well. Then, there's other things we can work out with the city as far as some of the retail uses, when they become nighttime uses versus daytime. There's some cross easement as far as some parking that could possibly happen with, like, across the street with the, the library areas that's not being used in the evening. So there's some things like that we could do as well to, instead of just building a bunch of extra parking, do what happens in most urban developments and try to, you know, utilize it to the maximum what's around there.
Madam President, will you have a contract or an easement or some kind of contractual agreement, MOA, provided with the library or other facilities nearby to use, cross-use their parking facilities?
Yeah, we do not have anything in place at, at this point in time, but it's something that we'll definitely be talking to them about. 25 is a max for the retail as well. We definitely set it up that we want the end caps to be used, and then as, again, we can fill it up as fast as we can, then we'll, we'll do that. But we can actually park in some of that space as well to increase that prior to getting leased.
And what is the walking distance in time from the purple line, I think is the most nearby, to this development? Do you know that off the top of your head?
I unfortunately do not know. I don't think it's far, but I'm not sure in minutes how far that that is.
You know distance?
That either, I'm not sure.
Two blocks.
The two.
Like, two blocks.
Thank you.
Yeah, I believe there's going to be a stop right outside Arts for Lawrence on that Otis Avenue part before it gets to Ivy Town.
Any other questions, discussion?
Is the purchase of the real estate dependent on approval of bond? Is that a contingent? Or is that going to happen regardless?
On a ten bucks.
The sequence of that as well?
I know, it's only 10 bucks, but...
Yeah.
Contingent? Contingent. Contingent.
Okay.
Okay, sorry, yeah.
Contingent, so.
If I could add one thing back on the parking discussion, Parcel B, which is the parcel that's west of the Giacomo property, Fort Harrison Reuse Authority is entertaining building a parking garage there, we're in the early stages of that, given all the new, new development here, plus with the revitalized Civic Plaza, we do expect that there'll be a lot more, you know, parking traffic down here. So that's something that's probably more likely than not to be feasible, so we're exploring that right now.
Okay, thank you. Any other councilors?
I had a discussion earlier regarding the TIF and the financing and the ban, I think is the proper terminology here. And it was concerning the 90-10% split. Could you just go into that and elaborate as to how that's a benefit in this particular case to the city of Lawrence, whereas typically in some other TIF sort of organizations and contractual agreements, that's not always the 90-10 split? Could you please do that for the rest of our benefit?
Yeah, I'm actually, Adam, I think I might let you come up and talk about this. He's a little bit more of the expert in the, in the TIF area, but good question.
Thank you.
And good evening, councilors. My name's Adam Collins with Wallock Summerson House. So, Councilor, to answer the question I think you're asking, there, there are a variety of different ways that communities have looked at TIF. In some cases, they'll give a percentage, in some cases, it's 100%. In some cases, it can even be more so. So if you look at, you know, these particular projects, I don't think there's really a common thread throughout the region. It varies based on community and ultimately what the developer needs in order to complete the project. So if you're looking at this here, 90-10 provides 10% of the split. Again, those property taxes will generate to the benefit of the community in addition to the additional development that happens around, the increase in development that you see nearby as more projects come through at a higher valuation. The additional projects tend to increase in value as well. And then all the other benefits that you get from additional residence income taxes and, and all of those that flow, flow through to the municipality as well.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Don't, don't go anywhere, sir. I got a couple questions for you there. I hate to be this way, but you know, the longer I sit on the stage, the more I can't take assumptions. So I, I follow your philosophy of we bring in this new development, invest in that, that's going to increase the value of properties around, right? And you guys done a lot of work in central Indiana. Is there any documentation of this?
Well, there, there are different ways. So I can tell you Indianapolis, former life, I worked in economic development there. There'd been a study done going through the 90s through the early 2000s that said for every dollar the city had spent, there were $7 in direct investment and $11 in indirect investment in downtown Indianapolis in terms of work that we had done but commissioned by a consultant, a guy named Brad Hurt, in Indianapolis. So I don't know if there's been any widespread throughout the community, or would I say throughout the community, throughout the region, but I can tell you, we've had that done previously, you know, for me in another life, where we've looked and said what that looks like.
Sir, with most, with the utmost respect, I want to make sure I'm following you correctly. You came in here in front of this council and said, "With your development, it's going to increase the property value in the area. Your company you currently work for builds beautiful developments in other areas in central Indiana. If you state that on the record that that's what it's going to do, then..." If you state that on the record, that that's what it's going to do, then I was hoping that I would have something that you could easily point to and say, yeah, look what happened in Brownsburg, Terrell, or look what happened, instead of me going to look at some broad central Indiana report. You know what I mean? I mean, if you want me to believe it...
Counselor, it's a great question. And again, just to clarify, I work for a law firm who represents a developer, right? As opposed to, I don't represent the developer itself. But I think when you look at overall what, what happens in these kind of projects when you have investment, it's complicated and multi-layered, right? So it's very difficult to say, if you look in, in a particular city or a particular area where one project is going to have the direct impact, right? It's hard to say there are multiple projects that can come in that can raise the value of the area around it. So it's, it, it becomes a little bit more complicated to say, we have one and we can tie it to. What you look at overall, over the history of time, is to say how much money we've invested and how much the aggregate value has raised.
Well, with the utmost respect, the statement you just made was contrary to the first statement you made. You said that we come in, we bond this building, we put a beautiful building up, it's going to increase the area.
No, I, I think those two things go together.
But you're thinking, I want to know, is it factual? We're making factual investments, right? I mean, I, I believe the assumption is right, but I've yet to see it approved when I built the fires, I mean, a police station down the street. Same guy came in and said, hey, everything's going to go up, it's going to spark other development. Hasn't happened yet, right? So I'm trying to, you know, I'm trying to base my decisions on, on facts that I can hold a paper to, so that two years from now, three years from now, seven years from now, I have something to say, well, I made this decision based off of this packet of information, and this is what the trend is, and this is why development in this area is crucial. Because we got a fire, we got a, we have a, I do believe you, right? We have new things coming in altogether, and I do believe that that's going to help us. But I just don't want it to be arrogant that your development is going to prove, improve our area. And if so, I would like to have some documentation that, that leads to that.
Counselor, I think that's a, a great point and a great question. It's an aggregate, right? A rising tide lifts all boats as it relates to development, whether that's a combination of fire, private development, public safety, those all work together. Again, I think the easiest way that we've seen it done in other communities to try to answer your question directly is to look and say, over time, when you look at the investment those communities have made, what did they receive directly from counterparties? And then what did they see in the aggregate overall? And that's the best information that's really out there.
Any other discussion?
Discussion on this?
Does anybody else have any questions? If not, I, you go, Maria.
I want to wonder if you could also, for the benefit of the rest of the counselors, explain how this will affect the school referendum and the payoff in that regard? Does anyone have any information about that?
Prepare, they're smart up here.
Hi, Bruce Donaldson with Barnes &amp; Thornburg. We've been serving as bond counsel to the reuse authority on this. So this is in the existing Fort Harrison TIF area, right? So whether or not we do the standalone separate project, I don't think the project will happen if you don't do the bond. But if it did happen, it's going to be captured in the, the larger Fort Harrison TIF area. So it's not, it's not like it would go back to the taxing units. Referendum debt is, is exempted from TIF. So this would actually generate more money to the schools. The new assessed value, the referendum rate will be applied against this new assessed value to generate additional money on the referendum.
Thank you, that was a good answer.
So in essence, this will be a greater benefit by doing this individual TIF on this development to the school referendum in whole. Over time, it will actually provide more tax dollars to that. That's what I wanted to make sure that was clear to our public and our counselors.
Yes, and while I'm here, I might just remind everybody that this, this debt, the city of Lawrence has absolutely no liability for this. The only source of repayment would be that 90% of the TIF from this new project that would go to pay the bond.
Thank you.
Madam President, I'm, I'm, after being in the committee meeting, Finance Committee meeting, I, they had a really good presentation, and we had an opportunity during our time to be able to answer a lot of our questions. As a representative who's been able to hear their presentation and what they have going and their intent to help the city of Lawrence and just, you know, I, I think that this is a really positive thing for our city. So I would like to make a motion to approve Proposal Number, this is number 22. Thank you.
Yes. So there's a motion?
Yeah.
A second?
Second.
Oh, sorry, Counselor Freeman seconded. Okay, all in favor by show of hands? Motion carries unanimous.
Madam President, I know I'm out of order, but I would ask you to indulge me. This is why I should listen to Kathy as she reads proposal, as me reading the agenda. If you don't want to, I understand, that's fine. Is it possible to go back and have me, and change my vote on 17? I thought we were still on Proposal 26.
We're going to go back to 17 anyway, so it's okay.
We are?
Yes, we amended, we amended the map.
There we go. I'd rather be lucky than good.
Yeah, so...
Sorry about that. I did not, you know that you guys were doing that, so...
Yep. Yes, Counselor Giles?
I know they're leaving the room, and we've already voted, and, and it doesn't base my vote, it just popped in my mind when she hit it about it. We never had a discussion on fire impact. It made me think about the big fire that we had on the fort and, and dealing, dealing with that, and I just thought about the new units. I just didn't know, I mean, we've already voted, we support it. I just don't know if we, will that adjust the plan for us? Is there anything that, does it change anything for us, having those, all that on, on the fort? Yeah, I, anyone that would answer from the administration, just was curious when she hit that, it made me think.
It doesn't, it doesn't change our responses. We have some responses for...
Chief Patelos, I don't mean to interrupt, no one at home can hear your response. And if you don't mind coming up to the mic, thank you.
I'm sorry, it just hit me when she said that, you know?
It's a, it's a good question. So we have pre-planned responses for commercial, residential, high-rise, and like, even if there's a big, long building, we, we consider that like a, same as a high-rise. So another building in the area, like when they built the True Hotel, we're equipped to, that, it doesn't change our responses because there's building stuff in our CAD. So when something happens, it, there's a predetermined amount of engines, ladders, battalions, ambulances, and all that go to that scene. So it doesn't, it doesn't affect our response.
You're good, you're covered. I just wanted to, thought about making sure you were, you guys were...
And part of that too, and we got our ISO ratings, all that's taken into consideration. They even check our flows on our hydrants, the training we've done, the nozzle on our engines, how much hose we carry. So that, it's, it's all come, so it doesn't really make it to how many businesses we have, as long as they're in like a hydrant area. And the biggest fear comes in like, if you get in those areas that don't have a hydrant, which we have very few of those areas anyways. But, you know, as far as we're, it doesn't really change our response at all.
Thank you, sir.
It's just, if there's a different configuration, we try to get our people in there so they're familiar with the layout, that's all.
Thank you, thank you. Okay, we're going to circle back to Proposal Number 17, 2022. We need to, yep, we need to withdraw, I need you to withdraw your motions for Proposal Number 17, because we need to do an amendment because of the map, the boundaries that were drawn on there, okay?
Yes, I, I think, it was my motion, correct?
And then Deb seconded.
So I will withdraw that motion and make a motion to amend it as stated earlier, giving the clarification of streets.
Great.
Please.
And I will second the withdrawal according to what has been stated.
Okay, and you will also make the motion?
And then I will also make a motion to second the amended...
The amended version?
Okay.
And then we'll ask for a full vote on the amended?
Yep.
Got it, thank you.
Any discussion on the amended version of Proposal Number 17, which includes the maps?
So, just for clarity, are we voting just to amend the map or voting for the whole thing?
Just to amend the map.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Madam President, are we talking about the map that Chris sent us, the one with the streets that were named and...
Yes. So if there's no more discussion, all in favor by a show of hands to accept the amended version with the map? Okay, motion carries. Ananamous?
Now, the map has...
Now?
That's it.
I need a motion to accept, to approve the amended version of Proposal Number 17, 2022.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion second, any discussion? Seen none, all in favor by show of hands? Motion carries, six-three. Next on the agenda, we have New Business, Proposal Number 27, 2022. So just to make sure I have it covered, Proposal Number 23, 2022, Proposal Number 24, 2022, and Proposal Number 25, 2022, and Proposal Number 26, 2022, all remain in committee as a whole. Next, New Business, Proposal Number 27, 2022.
Proposal Number 27, 2022, introduced by Counselor Rusomarov. A proposal for an ordinance of the Common Council of the City of Lawrence, Indiana, amending the Lawrence Municipal Code to establish an always-stop intersection at Glass Chimney Lane and High Timber Lane.
Okay, that will be assigned to code. Next, we have Proposal Number 28, 2022.
Proposal Number 28, 2022, introduced by Counselor Freeman. A proposal for an ordinance of the Common Council of the City of Lawrence, Indiana, authorizing the issuance of general obligation notes for the purpose of providing funds to pay for certain capital projects and incidental expenses in connection therewith and on account of the issuance of the notes and appropriating the process thereof.
Okay, that will be assigned to committee as a whole. Next, we have Proposal Number 29, 2022.
Proposal Number 29, 2022, introduced by Counselor Freeman. A proposal for an ordinance of the Common Council of the City of Lawrence, Indiana, amending Title III, Article II, Chapter IV of the Lawrence Municipal Code related to vehicles stopping, standing, and parking within 2,000 feet of a school.
Okay, that will be assigned to code. Next, we have Resolution Number 14, 2022.
Resolution Number 14, 2022, introduced by Counselor Freeman. A resolution of the Common Council of the City of Lawrence, Indiana, authorizing stormwater improvement plan grant application submission and local match commitment to the Indiana Office of Community and Rural Affairs and addressing related matters.
Okay, that'll be assigned to Finance. Next, we have comments of the administration.
Thank you for your time tonight. Last Friday night, the Lawrence Kiwanis Club hosted a delicious Italian dinner night at Community Park, where dozens of families came out to enjoy Italian cuisine and drinks prepared by Kiwanian volunteers and raised funds for their awesome programming and support of our local kids and Riley Hospital for Children and the great work that they do. More than 3,200 runners and walkers participated in the Fort Ben Half Marathon two days ago, including our very own Mayor and Mrs. Collier, who completed the 5K portion of the event, turning in what I'm sure was a record time. More than 1,000 visitors from all over the state enjoyed our popular Lagers in Lawrence Oktoberfest at the cultural campus, which featured polka bands, performances by dance troops, a Steinholding competition, wiener dog racing heats, and delicious food and beverages provided by more than 30 microbreweries and Indiana distilleries from all over the state. The weather was beautiful, and our guests, everybody had a great time. Rave reviews. It's, Indiana On Tap is the organization that puts that on, and you're going to be learning more about them, I understand, in a subcommittee meeting. So they estimate that this is the largest event, and they put them on all over the state. The one in Lawrence is the best attended. This coming Wednesday, two days from now, on October 5th, that is National Coffee with a Cop Day, and our first responders with the Lawrence Police Department will be celebrating at Brickhouse Coffee Company near 79th and Fall Creek Road in the Kroger Plaza there. Everyone is invited to come out and chat with some of our officers from 9:00 until 11:00 a.m. Also, this Wednesday, we will be participating, we as in the city, will be participating in a community resource and employment fair with our partners at CAFE, which many of you probably know is the Community Alliance for the Far East Side. Also participating will be La Plaza and the Far East Side Employer Engagement Task Force. This free event will highlight employment opportunities and other resources our citizens might need. It will run from 4:30 p.m. until 6:30 p.m. at the CAFE headquarters located at 8902 East 38th Street, or more commonly, the northwest corner of 38th and Franklin. This Thursday, lots of events to talk about, will be this year's final Fort Benjamin Harrison Farmers Market of the season. So we are going out with a fall festival that will feature 44 vendors, food and beverages, a DJ, activities for the kids, and a Fall Fest Howl-a-Ween at Costume Contest, which promises to be very interesting, all at the cultural campus near Otis and Post from 4:00 to 7:00 p.m. We invite everyone to come celebrate Latino culture through food, dance, art, and crafts at Dia Latino de Lawrence. It's coming this Saturday, October 8th, at the cultural campus. Again, starts at 11:00 a.m. and runs until 3:00 p.m. Our partners in this event include the Metropolitan School District of Lawrence Township, Dr. Smith and his team, Arts for Lawrence, the Lawrence Township School Foundation as well, and we really look forward to celebrating and promoting Hispanic Heritage Month. Such a key event, especially in our city. And finally, on Thursday, October 13th, that will be the day for our city's fall citywide cleanup effort. You will notice teams of city employees from all departments wearing their neon shirts and gloves and using grabbers to pick up what's going to be, I'm sure, dozens of large trash bags of litter from our local streets, sidewalks, drainage ditches, parking lots, just to name a few. We encourage all Lawrence neighborhoods to organize their own litter pickup events to help keep Lawrence beautiful, just like the great volunteers of Lawrence's largest neighborhood did on Saturday, Winding Ridge. So their, Winding Ridge is, is leading by example in that category, and we really appreciate all the residents that came out, Counselor Rusomarov in your neighborhood there. So thank you all. And that's all I've got.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Next, we have citizens' comments.
Throw him back on the list.
Okay, seen none, we adjourn.